Shall we start with the pledge for anyone wishing to participate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Call this meeting to order. This is Morgantown City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, November 4th at 7:59 PM. If Clark Wade would please call a roll.
Yes, Jo Boo-Gonham.
President.
Jody Hollingshead.
Here.
Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Jenny Saleen.
Here.
Mark Downs.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Trumbull.
Here.
First item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have the October 21st, 2025 special meeting minutes, October 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes, and October 28th, 2025 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? Approved by consensus. We next have a GIS Day proclamation. And we have the city's... Are you GIS manager, director? What do you go by now?
Geospatial Services Manager.
GIS manager.
We'll go with that.
Whereas the city of Morgantown recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the public through Montegalia County; and whereas geographic information systems technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to respond more intelligently; and whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential; and whereas the city of Morgantown acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens; and whereas to recognize and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world; and whereas having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education and inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good; and whereas the city of Morgantown is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now therefore I, Danielle Trumbull, Mayor of the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the 19th day of November, 2025, as GIS Day and encourage each individual to join in the recognition of the value and application of this technology. But now for this, we have to go to the other side. We now have a few public hearings on the agenda. These are open to the public for those wishing to speak on these specific items and these specific items only. This is different than the public portion. Our first public hearing is Item A, an ordinance establishing the Morgantown Mosaic Neighborhood Engagement Initiative. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic?
Very excited for this one. I appreciate all of the edits done to it to fix some of the issues that were in it, and I really look forward to applying this. And it looks like it's written so that if we do see issues coming up, we are able to address them. And it's like a little bit malleable where we can approach projects and issues as they come up since it's brand new. I appreciate it.
My apologies. Could you state your name and address for reference?
Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. Sorry, it's different than normal.
I've never spoken in a public hearing.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this specific item?
Annie Curran in York, 7th Ward. Everybody knows where my house is. Thank you for amending the title of the ordinance. And also thank you for removing the specific entities that were allowed to receive money under it. I was curious about that. But you took them out, so it's all better. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the Morgantown Mosaic? Seeing none, we will move on to Item B, an ordinance providing for membership of the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. I'm really excited about the restructuring. I think it's incredibly important to have the city manager at all the meetings. It's created so many hurdles in the past to not have one there, so I think that'll be good. I am a little cautious of the rewriting of like who can be on it. It's a little bit restrictive, but I'm sure if someone has a good point and can talk their way into it, you guys will be open to hearing them.
Thank you. Anyone else on the membership of the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency? Seeing none, we will move on to Item C. A public hearing regarding the proposed creation of a new redevelopment district in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia to be called the City of Morgantown East End Redevelopment District Number Six, the TIP District, the proposed development of certain site infrastructure and other capital improvements within or for the benefit of the TIP District by the approval of a development project plan to be known as Project Plan Number One, the Project Plan, as more particularly set forth in the tax increment financing application, the TIP application for the TIP District, and the project plan submitted by the Montegalia County Development Authority, and the proposed financing of the projects included in the project plan by the issuance of bonds or notes, the TIP obligations pursuant to Chapter Seven, Article 11B of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended. Anyone speaking on this particular?
This one I have a lot to say. Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Tonight's vote... Ah, sorry. Tonight's vote is not a small step. It's not just another item on the agenda. The decision before you will determine how one of the last major developable pieces in the land of Morgantown that we all live in, how it's shaped for decades. So if we give up leverage on this site, we do not get it back. So this is a generational decision. I want to be very clear, I'm not against development. I want to see the East End thrive, and I want to see new housing, renewed vitality, and well-designed investment. I am not anti-growth, but the TIP as written asks the public to subsidize the private development with no guaranteed public benefit in return. That is where I have to draw the line. So the project plan language describes the TIP as something that will quote, "promote sustainable redevelopment, replace obsolete housing stock, increase economic vitality, eliminate blight to improve neighborhood health, and ensure long-term community benefit." Obviously, those are goals I support. I believe everyone here supports those goals, but the TIP does not require or define how these goals are actually to be delivered. Right now, as we're being asked to approve a financial structure based on hopeful language rather than enforceable outcomes. That's not responsible stewardship of public funds. So it's public money, private gain. A TIP freezes the current property tax baseline, if I'm understanding correctly. You know, if I say something that's not accurate, that's totally fine because this is not where I excel at. And I would be happy to be corrected. But right now, this would free the property tax value... Like as the property tax value rises, the increased tax revenue does not go to the Mon County schools, fire, police, EMS, infrastructure maintenance, or the general fund. It's diverted back into the development for 20 to 30 years. So our services, which already operate with limited staffing and strained resources, will be expected to handle more people, more calls, more inspections, more emergencies, without receiving the revenue that would normally support that increased demand. That's not fiscally neutral, that's a subsidy. So my problem is that it's a real financial risk. We have already seen new apartment complexes in Morgantown sitting partially empty. We don't have a guaranteed demand for hundreds of more high-rent units. If lease is... If the lease is slower than predicted for people to move in, and/or if the retail tenants don't fill ground-sto-floor space, or if interest rates shift, or if the market softens, all of these could be an issue that makes the TIP not generate enough revenue to pay the bonds. This isn't really theoretical. This can totally happen and does happen to cities across the country, and then they have to declare bankruptcy. So we need an answer to all of these questions. What if revenue falls short? Who is financially responsible? If the answer is, well, it depends, then that's not really acceptable when we're talking about public money. So another point, as I said, I have a lot to say. This TIP encourages high-rent market rate development, and honestly, it's not the housing that Morgantown needs right now. We've seen the demand for Morgantown housing. I mean, we just saw it, what was it, less than a month ago? So this TIP, the financial structure of it, depends on maximizing property value. That means the developers incentivized to build the highest-priced housing possible. Right now in Morgantown, the average market rate, we know it's not sustainable. We know it's taking a large chunk of everyone's pay, and that we have a housing crisis. So if we approve hundreds of new market rate units without affordability requirements, I don't see how that stabilizes housing. I think it has the potential to raise rents across the entire city, especially if they're these market rate potentially luxury, high-end, or high-rent apartments. Some people say, oh, well, then the old, like the older landlord units will then become available. And that's not necessarily a guarantee. Sometimes when this happens, it causes everyone in the whole city to raise their rates. So that's where the affordability requirement comes in. I would want the city to try and implement an affordability requirement. Like there's no workforce housing commitment in this. There's no housing trust contribution in this. The plan says long-term community benefit, but there's no mechanism in the TIP to produce that benefit. Without affordability concerns, this TIP deepens the crisis. And then, I still have more to say. The plan states redevelopment will improve public safety. The adding hundreds of residents and new businesses means more emergency calls, more building inspections, more enforcement needs, more fire and police response. Because the tax revenue is diverted, fire and police, as I understand, will not receive the funds needed to support the increased level of service. I just want to know if they've been consulted about this development, and if they think they can handle it, and if they have written approval that this is something they can undertake. Before approving a project at this scale, council should have these written statements from these departments confirming they can absorb this growth. If these statements don't exist, and we are not planning, we're guessing, and we're hoping, and that's not how you should govern on hope. I mean, it's helpful, but it's not, you know, great. Retail access. So this one was a part that really concerns me, especially with how many vacant buildings we have. The large ground-floor retail footprints that I saw in the plans, they're almost always occupied by large national chains. My question is that provides... Like that gives like the stability, like the staple thing, but it also doesn't help build local vitality. So if we want Morgantown's identity to remain rooted in local business, we need a smaller format of retail base so that operate at lower cost, which is lower risk. Like we've seen this method at the MAC, and they're successful with it. They have those small spaces downstairs. They have allowed... Because of that, they've allowed dozens of creatives and small businesses to gain a foothold, which is awesome. So if we can encourage that type of design choice for whoever decides to build there, that would be awesome. And the city's stated goals are not met as written. So the project plan uses strong public benefit language, but none of it's enforceable. So I would like to see how it's enforceable. Like sustainable development is not defined. Replacing obsolete housing does not specify price point or accessibility. Increasing economic vitality does not specify who benefits. Long-term community benefit is never measured or guaranteed. So I feel like we shouldn't approve a TIP based on aspirational language. When the financing model undermines some of those aspirations, my request is to not approve the TIP as written, to table it, and have staff see if they can legally do a legal review requiring 10% to 20% of affordable or workforce units in exchange for TIP benefits or as an equivalent contribution to housing funds. My second request would be written capacity assessments from our fire, police, and utility boards. My third request would be a retail footprint plan that includes small format spaces so local businesses can participate. You know, we can still have development. We can still revitalize the East End. We can still initiate investment. But if public money is supporting this project, the public should receive a clear, measurable, guaranteed benefit in return. Because this is a once-in-a-generation land use decision, let's not give away leverage. We have all the leverage. Let's not give away public value. Let's not hope that benefit appears. Let's require it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to be back. So I'm Barry Wendell, Barry Lee Wendell. I live at 1319 Heritage Place in the 7th Ward of Morgantown. I looked at the binder about the proposed district along Richwood Avenue. I have some questions and thoughts about the proposal. How successful have these districts been in the past? Mon County has University Town Center and Westridge, but the developer is bankrupt and owes money to MUB. These districts have provided retail opportunities and employment for some, usually at low wages. Meanwhile, there are only two residential areas, one for students and the other at market rate. It is impossible to walk from these places to any of the stores with sidewalks lacking. There are no small parks, playgrounds, schools, or bike paths. Housing that exists is not affordable for the people who work there. The Richwood Development proposes a retail core, but the housing proposal will be at market rate, which in Morgantown, as we've already heard, means it will be expensive. Two, is there a market for the stores, apartments, and hotel proposed? Nearby High Street seems to be struggling as a retail center. How will this development compete with High Street? Or will the stores be more vape shops and liquor outlets? Three, as things are built in the district, tax money will go back to the district. This is money we need for parks, recreation, schools, and public transit. Seems to me like a giveaway to developers. And speaking of developers, how was the developer selected? Was there an open bidding process? Did anyone consider that the developer chosen has shown open contempt for our city council for many, many years? I hope this area of development will be easily accessible throughout the city by transit, on foot, or by bicycle. From what I saw in the plan, I would prefer that this area used as a playground, basketball courts, and maybe a centrally-located childcare or senior citizen facility. I wouldn't mind below-market-rate housing to help with the shortage of affordable housing for many in our community. Thank you for your consideration. Feel free to contact me to discuss any of this. I'm going to give this to City Clerk to distribute to the rest of the council. That's my address, email, and phone number. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this specific item?
Annie Curran in York, 7th Ward. Clearly, both of the prior speakers did way more homework on this than I did. But following up on what they're saying, this sounds like affirmative action for developers. I've heard each of you on the council talk about affordable housing, and how we need to get some. And when I first heard about this, Richwood being raised and property being available, I was told that the whole reason for doing this was to put in affordable housing. And as informed tonight, no, that was never part of it. But there's no requirement for that? Are we going to be men of our words or not? Do we want affordable housing? Do we want low-income housing? Do we have any place else to put it other than this empty place that is already to roll? And as for developer, and who got the bid, I don't recall that having been publicly discussed. And I've been to every meeting except five, I think, in three years. It probably wasn't, maybe I missed it. But it just, again, doesn't look good. And we really, really need affordable housing. We've had hours and hours of talk about camping bands, and homeless people, and shelters, and warming shelters, and there's no place to put them. Maybe we could build a place, perhaps on Richwood? Hmm, maybe we could build a place, perhaps on Richwood? State of West Virginia is very much opposed to affirmative action, except it's their idea and it's for something they like. But that's essentially what this looks to be, is affirmative action for whoever got their bid in and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ethan Enerline, 500 Station Street, Department 1103, local government liaison of the WVUSGA. I just wanted to speak generally about the East End redevelopment project. I've heard some things about it from Mimi and some other people. And also just speaking of massive comments that were said previously, I do believe that the units of the apartment spaces will fill up. If you look at State on Campus, which is a probably the only newer style apartments complex I can think of that's in the downtown area itself, they fill up really quickly. It's like usually they get all of their, usually they get all their spaces filled up by April, and they only have like 232 units. So, and the thing is, there's a lot of students that do want to live in downtown in order to more feasibly get to their classes without actually compromising the quality. So I do think that the units will fill up because of this, whether that be from students, probably a lot of, probably a lot from students and also, I guess, people that just want to live there. And then I also really like the plan for the grocery store in the district itself. And I think it's going to generate a lot of revenue as compared to other places, especially since you've got a lot of freshmen and, I know I'm talking a lot about students, but you got a lot of freshmen that are basically forced to live in the dorms and the nearest grocery store is like eight minutes or so away, Kroger and like two different areas. So if you want to get like regular groceries and not have to rely on the dining hall food constantly, then being able to have a grocery store right there to be able to walk to is going to be a really big win for them. That's all I had for that specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call on the TIF District Public Hearing. All right, we will move on to unfinished business. Item A of unfinished business is consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance providing for membership of the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency. First reading, October 7th, 2025.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was presented at the September Committee of the Whole as well as on the October 7th meeting. There are no substantial changes to this. It is just relooking at how the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency Board is comprised. The reason that this is on the regular agenda and not on consent is if this moves forward, there would be a request for us to identify the ordinance calls for an ex officio member from council to be assigned. So that would be the second part of approving the ordinance and if then council deliberating who may be assigned as the ex officio member on this board.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Clerk Wade?
Yes. Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes 7-0. The next item is boards and commissions, where I suppose we can discuss land reuse agency. We did not get a chance earlier this evening to discuss any other board and commission appointments, so would we like to take this up now or decide at a later time for land reuse agencies?
For us to decide, who on council would be appointed? I mean, I'm fine to discuss it now.
Okay.
Pardon?
I said, I'm fine to discuss it now if we'd like.
When does it meet? It's a Thursday.
Thursday's at four o'clock.
Four o'clock, correct. Fourth Thursday in the month.
Which Thursday?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth last month.
I'm out.
I would, I have a strong preference, given the land reuse and preservation's agencies' engagement in my ward currently and their work in my ward specifically in staying engaged with that. I'd be happy to do it, but I'm open to anyone else that is interested.
I already attend their meetings and I would continue to do that, so I'm totally fine with you, but I'll still be there.
Yeah.
Sounds fine to me.
I'm happy to do it.
So do we need a motion to approve?
Yes.
Counselor Downs?
Can we do our normal procedure?
It would be a motion, a second, and an acclamation.
Yeah, just like we do for the, I just want to make sure. Wheeze, is that fine with you? I know Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Move to approve Mark Downs for land reuse agency position, council position.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk Wade?
I thought we just did this by acclamation.
By acclamation.
All right.
Yeah, by acclamation. How our normal procedure would go.
Fine. By acclamation?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. We will not make other appointments this evening unless anyone was prepared to do so because we didn't talk about it. Which brings us to our public portion. Subject rules established by council adopted by resolution generally come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes to speak, no personal attacks, you must address council as a whole. There is a sign-up sheet, but anyone wishing to speak is welcome to do so after. The first person on our list is Marvin Davis.
Oh, it's on.
Well, everybody's been adjusting it. Marvin Davis, I'm the Geospatial Services Manager for the City of Morgantown. I'm technically not a resident, but I put my address as 389 Spruce Street because I've been here a lot lately, so it is my second residence at times. I'd like to thank you all again for recognizing GIS Day as an annual event. I'm glad to announce to you all today, we are doing another event, Open House Plus. We have involvement with West Virginia University this time. The Department of Geology and Geography is hosting a series of what we're calling Lightning Talks. If you don't know what a Lightning Talk is, just a short presentation about other things that we can do with GIS. Several students have stepped up to the plate and have some very interesting topics. So more or less the entire day of November 19th, as was stated in the proclamation, starting at 9:00 AM, we have a nice little commercial. I have to give props to the Communications Department for helping me build. So we have it posted on our GeoHub site under GIS Day, and we would love to have everybody here involved. I know schedules can be hectic. So the open house portion, this is why I'm not presenting tonight. I feel like the open house is more of a presentation that is easier to consume than in five minutes of me talking. But also, I would like to also invite you to our Lightning Talks. Those will be at Brooks Hall on the WVU Downtown Campus. If you need an address, it's 98 Beachhurst Avenue. They will be starting at 4:00 PM and they run almost till 7:00 PM because of the amount of people that were wishing to present. So would love to have city council be present, would love to have our city staff, also our city residents. It is open to the public from 9:00 AM all the way through 7:00. Come learn about what we're doing at the city and come learn about what the things we're trying to do every day to make your lives better and your jobs easier. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not normally respond, but my apologies, several of us will be out of town. The next person on the list is Annie Cronin-Yorick.
Annie Cronin-Yorick, Seventh Ward. Thank you for not putting you in my surname. I spoke at the last meeting about the proclamation rules and a lot of changes are made to that and I appreciate it, but some of the major changes made me come in tonight even though I did not want to. It begins with saying that proclamations are for state and local events. I think that exactly zero of the proclamations I do are for state and local events or for national observations of heritage months, Juneteenth and the like, and international events like International Human Rights Day. So I'm not sure why those limitations are put on there for state and local. The proclamation petitions must be put in no less than 45 days in advance and no more than 120 days in advance. At the last meeting, we talked about it being 30 days for proclamations. It's been done before. It's just going to be an update or redo from the last one, and I don't see that in the new rule, although I don't have it with me and didn't read it that carefully. But 45 days in advance is not reasonable for some of us who volunteer on your boards and commissions and have full-time jobs and families and health issues and stay very busy. And when they are turned in, they're turned in correctly and they are readable, and there may be a question about scheduling and we can work on that. But please do something about the 45-day in advance limit because I will not be able to have my International Human Rights Day proclamation read this year. Also, you know, speaking about the proclamation after it's read, and comments must be made during the public comments portion. That uproaches my right as a citizen to speak to other issues if I'm going to explain my proclamation during the public comments period unless I get two goes, one is human rights commission and one is a resident. So that'd be eight minutes of me talking. I have never spoken for four minutes after proclamation, but I also am fulfilling my job to educate the public on these issues that are being proclaimed. Do need to talk about them because I'm not going to put it all on proclamation because nobody's listening and you don't want to read it, nor should you. And my explaining it makes it relevant to the community. That's the point of them, I think. But also it shouldn't shut me up on other issues just because I've explained what the proclamation is for. So if you could maybe let me double dip, that would be fine. Otherwise, speaking immediately after the proclamation is issued makes more sense. And you can limit that if you need to, but gee. International Human Rights Day. We are having our event on December 7th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the ALD Center. In past years, 2023, every council member showed up but one who had to work that evening, and that was discussed well in advance. Last year, three members of council showed up. Mayor did not realize that he was supposed to be presenting the awards, but we figured that out. And I'm asking, please, that the mayor be there to present the awards this year and that the rest of you attend as well to show that we really do support human rights in Morgantown. Thank you.
Next person on the list, Stephanie Hunt.
Hey, Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. One thing to note is I would love coordination with DOH to get the holes on Walnut Street Bridge repaired on the pedestrian side. I know we talked about it last night. It's just something I thought I should bring up in public. And then also, I want to be very clear about something regarding the TIF. First off, I, as a citizen, had no idea what a TIF was because why would I? Like, an average person, why would you need to know what a TIF is? That's not normal information for an average citizen to need to have. So then I, you know, did my homework. But I want to be very clear about something because I think it can get lost in the discussion. I'm not opposed to the redevelopment of East End. I'm not opposed to new building, new housing. I'm certainly not opposed to the idea of finally having a grocery store walking distance from downtown in the surrounding neighborhoods. That would be a major benefit and I myself would support that and benefit from it. What I am, what I was opposing is not the build, it's the TIF financing structure being used to fund it. Like I said, I think most people in Morgantown don't know what a TIF is because why would we? That's not a normal thing that people encounter in their lives, at least not my life. So on the surface, it's like, like the TIF sounds like free money, but it isn't. So how a TIF, how I've become to understand it is it redirects the increase in property tax revenue away from schools, fire, police, roads, and the general city budget for decades. And that's the part I'm concerned about. So, you know, I support the project itself, the concept of East End, and, but I just don't think the TIF is the way that it should be financed. And if this development is the right project for the community, then it should be able to move forward with a financing structure that does not divert public revenue away from public services, ideally one that ensures the public receives some concrete benefit in return, like affordability requirements or local business access, which is like that tiny rental spots that I was discussing, like have that built in, you know, have legal see what they can do. So again, I want to see this line developed. I want to see high-quality, well-designed, community-scale development here. I want new housing options and I want a grocery store especially. And I want to see all the small businesses have opportunities here in Morgantown and in that spot. But the financing tool matters, the details matter, the public benefit should be defined, insured, and protected. That's the distinction I want to make sure is really clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Wendell? Pardon?
Hi, Barry Wendell, 1319 Heritage Place in Morgantown. I really just came to speak at the public hearing, but while I'm here, as many of you know, I was on the city council from 2017 to 2021, representing the Seventh Ward. And, oh, good. The, I like your sign. Anyway, people complained that I was worried about the meetings running too late. And now I'm 76 and it's worse than that. I'm on 10 different medications. I have, almost everything is going wrong with my body and it's very hard to even stay here to 9:00. And this was a problem when I was on the council also. The meetings are called for 7:00, but you're doing hearings on people who want to be on boards and commissions, and so the meeting doesn't start until almost 8:00. And I would hope that you figure out a way to start the public meeting at 7:00 as advertised. That would be my, my goal in life and then it could be finished by 9:00. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a very good track record recently. This was an unusual circumstance. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public portion? Seeing none, I will find my agenda again. We have no special committee reports. We do have several items on the consent agenda. I will read through the items on the consent agenda at that time. If there's any member of council wishing to pull anything off of the consent agenda, they may do so before a motion is made. Consent agenda. Item A, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance establishing the Morgantown Mosaic Neighborhood Engagement Initiative. First reading, October 21st, 2025. Item B, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the Arts and Culture Development Fund fiscal year 2025-2026 budget revision number one. Item C, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the Morgantown Capital Escrow Fund, revision number three. Item D, consideration of approval of bid call 2026-08 for asbestos sampling and demolition of 71 Donley Street and restoration of land. Item E, consideration of approval of bid call 2026-09 for asbestos sampling and demolition of nine structures and restoration of land. Item F, consideration of approval of bid call 2026-10 for asbestos sampling and demolition of 300 Overdale Street and restoration of land. And item G, adoption of proclamation guidelines.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Christine?
Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes 7-0. Moving into new business. Item A, consideration and action upon a proposed resolution regarding approval of the TIF application, submission of the TIF application to the West Virginia Division of Economic Development, and approval of other items in connection therewith. Oh, that was much smaller than the thing I had to read for the public hearing. Way to go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll provide an overview and introduction. We also have with us tonight Russ Rogerson with the Montegoa County Development Authority, the designated developer of this district. Carrie Cecil with Frost Brown Todd, who is serving as council to the city and will serve as. Carrie Cecil with Frost Brown Todd, who is serving as council to the city and will serve as bond council to the city for the district. And Rob Steptoe with Cruz and Associates, which has assisted with the financial modeling for the application that's in front. So the city council previously adopted a resolution to set a public hearing with thirty days' notice to the public with this TIF application on file that set your public hearing tonight. The, the application is now presented for your action. The resolution tonight, if approved, would allow the city to submit this application to the West Virginia Department of Economic Development for consideration. If the department approves that application, then the city council has the option to actually establish this district by ordinance. So this is kind of step two in the process. It does not obligate the city to anything. City council still has the option later to establish this district by ordinance and set the timing. And then, and then later, or, or at the same time coinciding with that creation, to issue bond financing that's supported by the development projections in the district. A bit of background about tax increment financing. The, the West Virginia TIF Act, it creates tax increment financing to support development that would not occur otherwise without the creation of a TIF district. So the basic mechanism that's used is the increase in property tax value, in this case, that is generated by development that wouldn't otherwise occur is captured and used for public infrastructure that supports that development. The, the upgrades to sewer, water, storm, road, infrastructure, and also public spaces that are needed to develop an underutilized area are, are what those increment funds are for. The, the additional property tax value is captured and returned to the city for specific use in accordance with the project plan. School districts do not lose money. They're made whole through the school aid formula and, and Carrie can discuss that in more detail. But just a kind of background on the TIF Act itself. This is a, a project proposed by the County Development Authority, a public entity on which the city has representation and centers on nine and a half contiguous acres of property that they have been able to secure that's, that's ready for redevelopment. It covers an area of about seventy-three acres centered on High Street and Willie Streets. So with that, if you would like, I offer Russ, Carrie, and Rob to talk about their roles in this project if, if council would entertain.
Certainly. Looks like Carrie's up first. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Ryan did a nice job kind of doing a primer on the West Virginia TIF Act. There's a couple of things I'd like to add to that discussion. The first thing is, is the parcels that are proposed for redevelopment are currently owned by the Development Authority. So there is no tax revenue currently being collected off of those parcels. And everything that has been modeled by a third party called MuniCap that is a national financial advisor that does evaluations of redevelopment is based off the idea of redeveloping those parcels that are owned by the Development Authority currently. The increase in tax revenue that we talk about to be used for TIF is the regular levy portion. So it is the cities, the counties, and the Board of Education regular levy. As Ryan said, the school aid formula does make the Board of Education whole. They still will realize the increase in values from this redevelopment. Also, the excess levies and bond levies, they're applicable. The increase in revenue will go to the levying bodies as it would with any other project. In addition, you know, if there are fire fees or any other types of fees to redevelopment, they'd be paying that and the city would have those revenues as well. The other big thing I want to make sure everyone is aware of, this is just, as Ryan said, another step in the process, but the city will be a partner in this district for its life, you know. When, one of the key points that would happen if the city creates the TIF district is when the development is ready to get underway, it would enter into a development agreement that would set forth the requirements for proposing the issuance of bonds, use of bond proceeds. Anytime there's a construction contract, there would be city representatives involved in the process for bidding. Anytime there is an invoice submitted from a contractor, it would come to the city to approve payment. So, and there would also be an ordinance procedure to approve the issuance of any bonds in the future. So the city is very involved, you know, going forward with the TIF district. And there are a lot of additional steps that happen along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're happy to get into any specifics of the numbers. I do, one thing with the TIP, TIP application is the West Virginia statute, unlike some other states in the country, is very specific about what we need to include and how we go through this process. Other places do it by contract, not in West Virginia. And there's even in attachment sixteen in the application, it walks through kind of the benefits and costs that can happen. You know, it, it goes through water and sewer and if there'll be additional collections and that type of thing. So it is addressed in the application as the code requires. And I think Russ and Rob are happy to answer questions as well.
And, and one additional point I, I forgot to make as well regarding the bonds, if they are issued. They are only payable from the increment funds that are generated by the district. They're, they're never payable from the city's general fund.
They're not guaranteed by the general fund?
They're, it's not committed under West Virginia law.
Okay.
Yeah, but so to reiterate, this is just establishing a district. This has nothing to do with financing at this point.
Well, and at this point, it's only a resolution to submit it to the state for their consideration to approve the application. So there's still an ordinance procedure that would be required to establish it down the road.
Come on up, Rob.
You're gonna need to be up here. And like Carrie said, the development agreement is going to be crucial because you'll, you'll want to have the construction loans approved and everything teed up before you would even issue TIF bonds. You would never want to issue TIF bonds before you have a development agreement.
Well, and I think the other thing that happens is, is, you know, if the district is created, you know, we have the development agreement in place. You're considering bonds. There's a detailed financial analysis that goes into any of those bond issues. Oftentimes in West Virginia, the first issuance of bonds are actually sold to the developer, so it's completely their risk. If they don't perform, if they don't, you know, create the revenue, then they don't get repaid. And the, it, the documents are always very clear that, you know, when the district terminates, that's it and there's no obligation of the city from there.
Hypothetical. Right now, it's owned by the Development Authority. There's no tax base on it. If this development does not happen and that property is pieced up and sold and it's not one major development that we would want to contribute to the infrastructure funding on, what would the balance of the TIF, what would happen to the balance of the TIF funds? Is the city, like, you can't use it for anything else, right?
You can only use it for the approved purposes that are in the application. So it's really road improvements, sidewalks, water, sewer, stormwater.
But sequencing, to Danielle's point, in terms of sequencing, right, to that, we're being asked to approve a district. And then, and then we've got development agreements that come after that and then bonds have to be issued, right? So really, we're not, what is, what is our risk beyond, up until bonds are issued?
There is no risk, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's tied up in a TIF district and so it can't be maybe tied up in another TIF district.
True.
Is that about?
You could always elect to terminate it. Well, we should be clear, I think the intention is, is a few, some of the parcels that are planned to be included in the new district are in an existing district. So we would need to terminate it before this one is created.
So there's some administrative action that needs to take place. But there's some runway, you know, to get us. I mean, we're, we're gonna have more line of sight on the likelihood that this, that this development, we all hope, happens, happens in, in, certainly as every day ticks by.
We want this to happen.
Well, and obviously, there's private financing that would need to be obtained so that they can do the project. I mean, there's a lot of steps along the way that provide reassurance.
I've got some questions about the model and the forecasting that was done, you know, to, to, to build the basis for the, the, the TIF and the, and the, the financial, financial solvency of this.
Can I provide one additional point of context for you?
Sure, absolutely.
We do, when we do the applications, we do the, like, rosiest, if everything goes perfect, what the financial model looks like. And we do that because we get the district developed with the highest bonding capacity. And then it gives the city more flexibility to make decisions going forward. So it's, that is one thing to just note is that's kind of the purpose of the analysis that's there.
To build the basis for the capacity, right. But, but, but in terms of likelihood, right, we do, you know, most pro, highest, highest and best and then most probable and then, you know, and then.
Then it gets refined based on reality.
Right, based on stress testing.
Yeah.
So can you talk to, I mean, I saw the two percent growth assumption.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the best kind of outcome that was used to?
Sort of a standard where you structure the bonds, the TIF bonds, the obligations around a, a coverage factor, about a one twenty-five in this case.
One twenty-five, okay.
On, on the revenue consultant MuniCap's projections. And, and in that case, it's the two percent growth factor. So you've got appreciation of property value, inflation, that's standard, each year so that those property values under that assumption appreciate in value, that two percent. But the, but the big piece of that model is, we don't want to get over our skis, so we're going to cap debt service. Okay, we're going to cap debt service at what is called the stabilized TIF revenue amount, which is what is projected for increment once, once the development is fully built out. And then that's sort of a low, a, a safe, a safe level. And that way, you know, even under stress, economic downturns, you know, a recession, let's say, let's say you, you have a bankruptcy of a top-ten taxpayer. A lot of scenarios, you know, for instance, another top taxpayer, you know, is able to switch from being taxable to tax exempt. We've seen some of this in other TIFs. So the, the key there is to cap debt service and the administrative fees annually sort of at that lower level, okay? So that you're able to pay that. And the most important thing is put a prepayment, allow prepayment if you do receive surplus TIF revenues in that growth factor, in that two percent. So it's kind of like, you've got that service here and you've got that growth factor, okay? But you're safer, you know, with that level lower debt service, but you still have the ability to prepay bonds each year. Okay? And that'll, in fact, that'll, in the projections that we've had with MuniCap, that potentially could allow prepayment of the bonds ten years earlier. So if, if, if final maturity of the TIF district and the TIF bonds were in twenty fifty-six or twenty fifty-five, you'd be able to prepay, if you have that growth factor, you'd be able to pay about ten years earlier in twenty forty-five, but you still have ten years of growth and revenue generated, so you could issue additional bonds.
Sure.
Or pay-go funds at that point.
Okay, okay, thank you. If, do you mind if I continue? And you don't mind if I roll through these? So, so, and we just, we talked about the Wharf District recently, right? And consideration of, and, 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 you know, I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, developers taking the risk, but that's not the case that we're looking at in the Wharf District now. Where we're, where we're, where we're being asked to, presented with a case for extending a TIF district another fifteen years because rather than, rather than, you know, allowing that's the speculative nature of development to play itself out in a way that would be, you know, have negative consequence to the developer. So a big part of that was because, because the assessed values of properties were appealed.
Yes, right. That's another.
And adjusted.
Right.
Are there mechanisms built in? I hope that we learned that lesson and that there are mechanisms that we built into this process that alert, alert us, the city, that, that, that where those appeals are being, are taking place and allow us to intervene in those processes.
It's one of the major risks in this entire process is the success of tax, the successful tax appeals of your larger taxpayers.
Yes.
And that really puts a hit on, on the, on the TIF revenues that are generated. So my understanding is that that used to be a process that was a local process, but that it's maybe a state process now?
There's two, there's two different portions to the procedures. Like, there's a portion that's connected locally. There's a portion that happens in October with the state. I have to admit, I'm not involved in that district, so I.
I, I, so I, so I guess my ask is, as council,
Yeah.
that we be considerate of that and build in safeguards for, for our stakeholders that, that protect us in our interest.
And I will say, you know, in my experience in, in the industry, you know, the two percent is kind of looking at, it's usually one of the cases. There's usually, when we get to the point of bond issues, there's three different cases they'll look at, kind of, here's the standard with the two percent. Here's worst-case scenario that there's no growth and we're kind of stabilized at the revenues we have. You know, they often, I was on a call with S and P this week with a client where they were looking at, okay, who are your top taxpayers? How is that going to work? I mean, there's, there's different components that we do. You know, one of the things, you know, obviously, the development agreement will be with the Development Authority, but there could be some agreements between the Development Authority that you can work with the city for the developer, for instance, to have an agreement not to appeal. Like, there's, there are some techniques we can use depending on.
Yeah, and, and thank you. That was one of my, one of my asks was going to be, well, was, do we anticipate a developer participation agreement? That, you know, I would, I would look for, maybe that's the place that we look for, for, you know, codification of those kinds of protections and that, 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 that afford us guarantee, a guarantee that, 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 that practice because I think it's, it's, it's a lot of times done in bad faith to, to not happen.
Another risk, construction delays.
Yes.
So there are, you know, several risk factors that go into how you're going to structure the TIF obligation, the financing for it. And we look at all of that, as Carrie was saying, at the right time, you know, once it's time to start that process. But again, the modeling that seems to work is allowing the best of all, you know, allowing that growth factor and prepayment if, if they're hitting that growth factor and prepayment of bonds. But, but having that baseline on the stabilized TIF revenue and capping debt service there gives the flexibility for both.
Okay. And that's one, one point two five?
Generally, yeah, that's, if it's a, if it's, you know, if it's a, if it's a bank placement or a limited offering or public offering, it's usually in that one twenty-five to one fifty coverage range.
That's what I typically.
Yeah. It's a little different if it's a developer, developer bond.
Okay. We're going to get more insight into that as this plays itself out.
Exactly.
Okay. And then, you know, just again, an ask for, for, for review and recommend, like, any kind of recommendations for reviews, annual reviews or performance. I think, you know, I, I wasn't involved in, you know, obviously, in the Wharf stuff or, but we've had mixed success with this TIF districts in Morgantown. Some, some, some performed very well and.
And that was an early TIF.
Yeah.
That was, that was a very early TIF.
Yeah, there were a lot of circumstances that happened there that were very personal and there was, you know, kind of, it was single-threaded. But, you know, there could be an argument that this could be single-threaded too. So, but, you know, I just hope that as a lesson learned that we, we, we have some, some review process that's, that's built in and required as a part of our performance and engagement in the TIF, or engagement in the TIF performance.
Can I, can I add one, one bit of information? I think it was brought up earlier about. Um, I, I think it was brought up, um, earlier about diverting, uh, diverting TIF revenues and it's, these TIF revenues wouldn't exist except for the development, uh, first of all. But also, uh, in addition to, you know, covering the school aid, uh, as Carrie did, and then the excess levy revenues that are generated from the projects, or the property and the project increase in valuation, property values, um, and the TIF revenue that goes to those, those, um, levy in bodies if they have excess levies in place. There's also the, the new tax revenue that goes to the city's general fund. And that's the B and O taxes.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, you're going to have a hotel, if, if there's a hotel here, hotel occupancy tax revenues, B and O tax revenues, sales tax from, uh, transactions, um, in the TIF district. You'll have, you'll have building permit fees, fire fees, so.
But when you say the TIF revenues wouldn't exist if not for development, that's, in my understanding, and please tell me if I'm wrong, they would exist just by the property being sold to a private person. If right now it's zero because it's owned by a non-taxable entity, just me buying one lot would increase the property value and would, like, I would have to pay property tax on that. The tax value is going to go up.
The land itself, though, is not really where the value is going to be. Like the, the, the dramatic increase in value comes from the development and the building of the, the construction of the projects, right? So there would be.
They've developed it.
I'm just saying.
You're starting at zero.
Yeah.
Everything's going to increase it.
Retail revenues, um, hotel revenues that, from the development, from the vertical build out and.
But, Rob, yeah. I mean, to your po- to your point, the vast majority of city revenues is going to be realized on the post-development operation and existence of, uh, rather than, rather than the incremental portion of property tax revenue that the city receives.
Right. And the, the, the projection in the MuniCap, the, uh, financial advisor, revenue consultant, uh, working, um, with the city and, um, the Development Authority, um, they project over 30 million over that period of when the TIF district is, is created, um, and 2056. So 30 years.
Other revenues.
Yeah, other, other revenues and fees.
Beyond the incremental portion of the.
That's, exactly. Exactly, those are the other, that's, and those are spelled out in the application under the benefits. There's benefits and costs. And hopefully, you know, that, those other tax revenues and tax, or, and fees then into the general fund will be able to cover some of the other, you know, fire and emergency services and things like that.
And what are the, what is the construction time? What's the development time that's being assumed from if it's 2026 when we set the TIF district? When does it assume the, the development will be done?
Good question.
I don't, Russ, you may have a better handle on schedule.
We, uh, we've, we've always projected a three to five year build out once it gets started. That's been the plan from, from day one and, and so we get started in 2026 and three to five years for build out. Nine and a half acres is a lot of property, but the way the development is put together, you can see it's all pretty well interrelated. So it's great, you know, you can't build one building and walk away. So, so that's the intent and that's why we look at as a total of 114 to 20 million dollars worth of investment. And, uh, and just know, first of all, I think this is a great discussion on TIFs because they're, you know, you have experts here. That's why they're doing all the talking. And I appreciate Brian and, and, and manager. These people work for you. They don't work for me, they don't work for the Development Authority. So you've got some really good people here looking out for the best interests of, of the city and its taxpayers. So, uh, so these are great questions. I think it's important to have an understanding of how a TIF operates because it's not easy. That's what these people do, that's their jobs. And, and so, uh, I think it's great to, for them to be able to explain that to you. As an operator or developer, our role in this thing is to really, uh, make sure that development happens. And utilizing the, uh, opportunities of TIF for public infrastructure to make that more cost effective for the private dollars, which is the 114 to 120 to come in and be spent and built and the benefits that Rod laid out, uh, come into play. But for those people who don't know TIFs and on TV or wherever they're listening, um, you have a lot of control in this process. And I think that's the most important thing, um, that this isn't something as a blank check. It's, it's, each step of this process has lots of city involvement and procedures and approvals that need to take place. And, and so I hope we come here often for bond issuance and, and all this comes to play because I think it would be a great way to really truly understand how they work, what your role is, and how we can all move forward and do what we want to do, and that is continue to improve our community as a place to live, work, and play. And, uh, and, and I'm also a big believer that, you know, tax dollars need to be well spent and I appreciate your interest in making sure that that happens.
So one more thing to add. If we're talking about your question of sort of a, a schedule for, for the build, then you also have then, um, the revenue and there's a timeline on those TIF revenues that are collected. So it's, it's appraised, it's assessed, it's collected. There are two, you know, essentially two sets of payments. There's a September, October payment of your taxes and then a March, April. And usually these are set up so that the payment date is on June 1st because that coincides with, with these payments that bill toward that June 1st payment of debt service, principal and interest. And so, um, we do a lot of, there's going to be a delay, obviously. That's a two and a half to three year delay before TIF revenues are actually collected into the special TIF fund. And, uh, so that process requires some other things like a reserve fund, capitalized interest to pay the bondholder or the holders of the TIF obligations. So there's a whole set of, uh, you talked about sort of this, then this, then this. That's the process and that's, that's how you kind of lay this out to, to, to sort of sync it up with the, the construction financing and, and the design and then the actual bill.
Russ, I'm, I'm glad you're here. So we, there was a lot of discussion about what amenities are going to be built. And, you know, we've all seen proposals, we've seen, you know, mockups, um, designs, but those are no, there are no guarantees that any of those specific things materialize. So, uh, you want, you mind talking, talking to that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, this whole thing started out with an opportunity. And that was an opportunity to get nine and a half acres of formerly, uh, college student housing under control. Rare feat, uh, rare opportunity. Um, you know, we talk a lot about Sunnyside and we have two acres down there. So just to give you some point of perspective. And in this longer interim period than we, uh, we all would like, we, we spend, you know, our developer partner has spent a great deal of time under, they know the market, understanding what can be built, what can be done. And that's where that plan that you all are talking about, the hotel and the apartments, and there's only 30,000 square feet of retail because the intent of this project is really to enhance downtown, uh, and downtown business, uh, serve students, serve residents, uh, in, in the general area. So that's the plan they came up with and that's the plan they're out trying to sell and trying to get to the point where they can let contracts and we can sell parcels and, and they can go out and get their financing. I'm also pleased to say that the, our development partner is, uh, uh, very bankable, uh, which is another big thing. And right now, looking at it from a total project perspective, which all that is, is good news and we're talking about the development side of the business. So, um, so yeah, this is a very critical piece to any development in West Virginia. If you can't cover the public infrastructure costs with that, most of these things don't pencil out, as they say, meaning that they don't cash flow, therefore banks don't loan money, therefore builders don't build. And that's the purpose of a TIF. And that's why it is the only tool is the local government that you have to help spur growth within your, uh, your boundaries.
This district, this TIF district is replacing an old TIF district. Could you just very briefly describe the footprint of this TIF district compared, I'm going to try to say that several times fast.
Yeah.
Um, but this one compared to the one that it replaces?
Yeah.
In terms of sort of square acreage and, and where, where it changes?
Yeah, so in short, in history time, when the TIF laws were passed, uh, Morgantown was pretty aggressive in getting out there and establishing some TIFs. And, and so this, the rich, the current TIF today is, was established early on in that process. It actually included a little bigger area than we have. It actually goes over in the Greymont area and, uh, and if you look at some of the older TIFs, they tend to be acre grabbers, right? Let's grab the most acreage you can because we capture any growth that, even if it's not related to what we're doing in this particular site.
Because you might have more money.
And that helps pay the bonds.
Yes.
But I think as you talk about learning over time is important because, you know, and I've worked with TIFs in, in, uh, at least one other state, um, extensively. And, and so really project TIFs or, or if, if the project's large enough and scalable is really the best way to go because now you're only impacting the area where the development truly is going to impact. And that, in essence, frees up, uh, this TIF would include, not include Greymont. And that was purposeful, and I think to the benefit of Greymont because what also happens is you could draw, you know, if you get 300 acres in a TIF and you build on 10 and somebody 100 acres away wants to use public infrastructure money and this is the only driver of that income, generally speaking, those funds aren't available to that group. So you can cover large tracts, but you only spend it in a small track. And so this will be, uh, well, the Wharf was probably a project TIF. Couldn't be described as that. It might, you know.
Well, and I would say the existing TIF was really creating because there was the thought that there was some development happening and let's, you know, go ahead and capture it and then we can use it as, on a pay as you go basis, which is essentially what's happened. But this is one where there's kind of a, a strategic project that it's built around, which I agree is generally more effective. And we do try and be thoughtful. We get, we pull up maps and kind of get into, you know, what do we recommend? Is there anything we see closing or moving in the future that may, you know, negatively impact the district? I think we're, across the state, it's gotten more thoughtful over the years.
We've learned a lot of lessons. And that happens in every state. And I will tell you, one, North Carolina, they, they implemented TIF legislation and it happened in one place, it failed and there's never been another TIF in that, that state since then. Give you an idea. In the far south, a lot of them used it for pure housing developments. And then 2008 hit, crashed. So that whole, what you're asking is very good questions because it's important that this thing is structured, uh, not to, uh, not to fail to the best of the abilities we have at the moment in time.
And the new district also has a longer amortization period. You're able to, you're able to amortize for 30 years, whereas the existing district is.
We're 10 years into it.
Yeah.
And so therefore your bonding capability goes down substantially because bonds are more long-term financing mechanism and a better interest rate.
Well, and especially if it does take five years to get the infrastructure in and get it fully built out, then you've cut that much more.
So would your risk to repay.
So a smaller footprint and a longer time period. And there was never any debt service taken out on the current TIF.
No, that was the other thing. There was no bonds issued on the current TIF and, and the only.
The money that built up was used to demolish the houses that were there?
Correct. The pay go money.
And you only had one project and it was actually the project built by our, our developer partner.
Uh, forgive me for asking you to repeat yourself, but for my sake, as someone who's new here, and, um, for the folks who came to speak on this matter, um, could you please go a little more in depth when you say that we have a lot of control in the rest of the process, that there will be lots of opportunities to shape this? Could you talk more about that, please?
Well, in the TIF process alone.
Yeah.
You, you, you were probably better suited to.
Yeah, happy to chime in on this one. So, you know, tonight you're considering a resolution that would submit the application to the state for approval. Assuming the state approves it, which we're hopeful that they would, um, it would be submitted back to the city and there's an ordinance procedure to create the district. So that gets things set up, you get it, the fund established so that the, the funds can be segregated in the future. From there, I, you know, every step of this district will come through city council. You know, usually what that means is, you know, the developer will be, well, the sub-developer will be working on their site plan, they'll be trying to obtain their financing. There's a lot of data and information we have to have from them to be able to move forward with the next steps because we need to have certainty around what they're building, when they're building it, what the timeline looks like. There is a 5G process that's required for any architecture and engineering services that would be paid for from the district. There is construction bidding required, so it's competitive bidding for anything where TIF funds will be used. So all of that would involve city council. The development agreement is really key. You know, before any funds are spent, that development agreement is entered into and it really lays out, you know, the responsibilities of, of the parties, what the timeline is. It does not obligate the city to issue bonds. I think that's one thing that's very clear. Any current city council cannot obligate a future city council to issue debt. So, you know, anytime bonds are being issued, it would come back to the city for an ordinance procedure, you know, at that point when we're getting ready for bonds to be issued, there's a draft indenture that will be provided, the original development agreement or any amendments to it, forms of bonds, uh, the structure for how the bonds will be issued. You know, your underwriter replacement agent will provide kind of their recommendations based on the revenues that are projected to come in. Usually there will be a third party report from MuniCap, for instance, evaluating the project at that point in time. So there's a lot of information and steps that go into the process. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Follow-up question, also, out of respect for, um, the folks who came tonight to speak and myself, um, you know, I, I appreciate your expertise so much. And I've had a lot of questions answered myself, um, tonight alone. And Russ, maybe this is for you more than anything, but, um, you know, we, we're talking high level about community improvement and how we believe that this project, um, is for the benefit of our community. Again, for the folks who took time out to come speak on this issue and some of their concerns that they raised, how, how do you see, big picture, how do you see this positively impacting the residents of Morgantown, particularly in the downtown area? And who, you know, one thing you mentioned earlier, um, was serving the residents of Morgantown. I encourage everyone to ask which residents of Morgantown we're serving and, um, and really look deeply into that.
Yeah, this particular development, uh, you know, the hotel, uh, the market rate, residential apartments, the small retail really is to serve the, the residents. There'll be a parking garage there with a grocery store that'll serve downtown and surrounding neighborhoods as well as the development, as well as the students. And then there's a general purpose building. So from that standpoint, uh, those who take advantage of any of those amenities there are served. When I say the entire community, I think the most important thing is, is to continue to drive increased, uh, tax dollars through growth for the city. So the city has increased income to do those things for the, all public members that they are challenged to do. And that's the important thing. Grow your fund base, which is your taxes, in a way that improves the community overall in terms of appearance and uses and the like. And then your tax dollars increase and that allows you to do more for, in any way that you see fit to serve your constituents. That's the bottom line. Income begins to be able to spend. TIFs operate that way. Without income, you don't spend. And, and so growing wealth, and when I say grow wealth, I mean grow wealth for all, is ultimately what good economic development is about.
Thank you.
And it seems that from the uses, most of which seem not to compete with other, other, properties and operations in, in the general downtown area. We don't have another grocery store. I think the retail is modest and as Russ just said, it's serving those residents in the residential units, um, at Woodburn Heights and Woodburn Flats, which are the proposed, um, residential complexes. In, in the hotel, now I, I do think we have a couple of Hotel Morgan and one or two other hotels, but hopefully those are. but hopefully those are just meant to supplement. And UniCap, the revenue consultant, they go through, you know, the occupancy percentages and things like that, and they're looking at, you know, when they come out with their projections of, you know, square footage, how much TIF revenue is going to be generated for each of these types of uses, retail and commercial and hotel, and they have software and they look at similar types of uses and, for instance, hotels around and retail around the country, you know, same types of stores if they're not exact. And so they really kind of boil it down, and they're pretty scientific about it.
That's helpful, thank you.
I do also think the infrastructure improvements are not just going to support this development. I mean, realigning the road with the loop, the water and sewer improvements will benefit everyone that lives in that area or works or enjoys that area. So I do think it's important to keep in mind those infrastructure improvements do, you know, and also just kind of the beautification of the area as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, the biggest challenge we have in the affordable housing area is, to be honest, is land price. That's why the housing authority struggles being able to do it because we can't get these land prices in such a way that you can abort, build and rent and buy. I think that's something that, you know, we want, you know, I believe in housing for all. So we need to continue to look at those opportunities and being able to, you know, find places where that can happen and make sense from a cost standpoint. And really, with the tools you have, you're somewhat limited in that regard, but I do think there, once we get the development momentum going within the city limits, I think that increases our opportunity to expand and tackle more types of housing within the community. I sincerely believe that.
I've got one additional question that came up as I was thinking about the UniCap model. We consider, do we plan to, or can we review this model with the assessor?
Absolutely.
And I think that would be...
It's already been.
If that's not a part of your standard practice, can that be done?
When we're approaching a bond issue, that is part of their procedures.
Okay.
Yeah, once we get really close, then we're going to really want to go back and review UniCap's projections, especially with the businesses and using the software and the comps from around the country. Because we'll want to quantify and qualify these businesses and make sure that they're either in those projections or not. And if they're in, we want to really make sure that, you know, these are reliable, reliable projections.
And I will say, UniCap has a lot of experience in the Morgantown area and across the state of West Virginia, so they also compare data within West Virginia as well. So when they're looking at kind of the values of property, they're taking in all of that information that they've accumulated over many years.
It's a good point. Not just national, they're looking at the local, they're very involved in many TIFs around the state.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It would be another set of eyes, and those are almost never, never bad. So, thank you.
If there's no other questions, we can entertain a motion. Jenny has another question.
I tried. I appreciate, we're almost there, sorry. I really appreciate the amount of time and partnerships that it's taken to get to this point and the fact that we're a pretty landlocked community in that we don't have a lot of property on the periphery of our community to build out. And so once there's property that is amassed enough that we can do something like this, and you all have worked together, the partnerships between the county and the city and the Development Authority and the university and every other bit of people on the planet that we can pull together to make this work, it's pretty amazing. And I don't think that we all properly acknowledge how difficult it is to do this as far as infill development in a city that has fairly small city limits. So just really appreciate that you all are willing to go through this and to reconfigure the district itself at this point is quite a feat, so anyway, appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you all going on a journey with us because it is a partnership. And this is not something there's a book on. This is the first for a lot of us in this community, let's be honest about it. So I'm hoping that if approved and if we move forward, that this can be a good lesson learned that we can take and continue to adjust and modify to continue development growth within the city of Morgantown. I believe that is the ultimate goal. You know, what's going to be built there, we want to build there, is wonderful, but if we just stop there, then we've only...
We won't have our complete housing picture.
We're only on one step. So I really believe using these partnerships to be able to leverage all assets of everybody pitching in is how we can continue to grow our community in a way that I think everybody desires and including all as well. So I sincerely believe that, and that's why this is so important from our perspective and, you know, the Development Authority. I mean, this will be the first project Development Authority's done in the city limits.
In the city limits, yeah.
So a lot of barriers have been breached and melded together, and I think that we just need to continue momentum. Regardless of what happens tonight, we need to continue that momentum, we need to continue to build, we need to continue to work together, and that's the only way together we can accomplish a lot more.
Thank you. Ron?
Thank you.
Was there a motion?
Move to approve.
You're not putting another hand up, are you?
No, I swear, second.
Thank you. Further discussion? No. Christine? Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes, passes 7-0. Item B, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of two parcels of real estate on Van Gilder Street from R1A single-family residential district to R2 single and two-family residential district.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Director Jaeger here today to discuss this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So as was stated, the request by the applicant is to rezone these two parcels on Van Gilder to an R2 district. After review, the Planning Commission found the applicant's request to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land management plan, and it was unanimous vote. It should also be noted that even though the proposed development there revolves around multifamily dwelling, that that's not part of the consideration. Even if this property were rezoned, it would still have to go through site plan review, and because of the nature of the zoning district, it would still have to get a conditional use approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So there will still be more opportunities for the public to weigh in on the potential development at this location. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Clerk Wade? Did you have something, Wheezy?
She just unmuted right when he said...
Oh, okay.
That's in my board, I believe, in the corner.
Yeah.
We've already, I would do that meeting, so we're okay to move forward with this.
Thank you. Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes, passes 7-0. Item C, consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of one parcel of real estate on Height Street from R1A single-family residential district to R2 single and two-family residential district.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Jaeger is back with us on this item.
Thank you again. So similar to the previous case, instead of building a new multifamily dwelling, the applicant here wants to reconstitute a multifamily dwelling use. And because it was grandfathered and sat vacant for a period of time, the only mechanism to constitute that right now is a rezoning application. So the request before you is to rezone a portion of property that was mentioned in your packet to an R2 district, and after review, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend to council that the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you.
Discussion.
Nope.
Clerk Wade?
Yes.
Joe Bugonam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingsen?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes, passes 7-0. City managers' report.
Yes, Mayor, a couple of items tonight. I do want to remind everybody that the offices are closed on November 11th in observance of Veterans Day, but there will be a parade at 6:00 PM that day for that event. We also have a change in our November council meeting schedule. We will have no meeting on the 18th, and the second regular meeting of the month will be the 25th in lieu of what is typically our committee at the hall. So just a reminder for the public of that change in that schedule. I'm sure Clerk Wade will reemphasize that as well, but want to make sure that that's properly put out there. Want to thank staff who, staff and community members who put a lot of effort into making sure that there were great events for Halloween this past week and that it was safe and enjoyable for our community as a whole. There were a lot of great options out there, so appreciate all the work that goes into those events. Speaking of great events, just as a reminder, we do have Arts Walk on November 7th, which is this Friday, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, with the theme of local for the holidays. I think it's important as we look forward to those things that we always appreciate and acknowledge the times where we are supporting our local businesses. I think that's always a worthy goal. We also have November 15th, 2:00 to 8:00 PM, the Moonlight Market for Morgantown, and then November 29th from 11:00 to 4:00 is Small Business Saturday. So certainly Main Street is putting out quite a few events in November for people to look forward to as we head into the holiday season. Brief update related to the warming shelter. This is probably a couple days old, and I'll continue to make sure that we continue to get updates on this. But last discussion that the positions related to hiring was being posted last week so that staff would be ready for the warming shelter come mid-December, and that is through Catholic charities related to the staffing. The Coalition to End Homelessness is working with the mountain lion to see if they are able to run vans in that location for transit, since buses may not be an option. Of course, having the discussion of if there's funding available to cover that, but that is an item that is currently being discussed and worked through. But overall, it's being reported that the progress is going well on making sure that we're prepared to have a warming shelter for this upcoming season. One of the things that I'd like to get in place for the next week or two is getting back on-site to see how the renovations are going for the facility. Want to make sure that that's moving along well. We are headed into one of the best times of the year, which is budget season, and so staff is working through, starting that process from a staff perspective, putting together their requests. Certainly look forward to feedback and discussions related to priorities as we enter what probably will be a challenging budget season with a lot of good discussion, but I think it's a great opportunity to set for the year ahead. I will be touring the historic post office this Thursday at 1:00 PM. I have not made it down there yet in the couple of months that I've been here, so I am looking forward to that. Would open that invitation to anybody else who would be interested to attend with me. And the last thing I wanted to briefly talk about tonight is one to thank you all for the opportunity to step away last week to attend the ICMA conference. I think it's critically important as we develop ourselves, develop our staffs, have the ability to network, collaborate with other communities, see how we can learn best practices, see the other communities' insights on their successes and their challenges, and it helps us be a better community. But the most important thing I want to make sure to highlight that came out of that ICMA event is Emily, our assistant city manager, has been recognized through the ICMA, which is the professional agency for city managers that sets the standard related to earning her ICMA CM credentialed status. That is a very high honor. It is a lot of work. Not only is it work, it shows the commitment to the ethics and the public service that goes into this type of role. So I wanted to make sure to publicly recognize Emily for that accomplishment. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Congratulations. City clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The Police Civil Service Commission met on October 23rd, and they set some new dates for entry-level police officer. We are, I think, down about 16 now. So in the past three or four years, we've had three exam, physical and written exams a year. Now they have bumped that up to four. So I just want to share that our next exams will be on January 24th, April 25th, July 25th, and October 24th, and those dates are on our website if anyone is interested. And then a little, want to share some, our outcome of our promotions so folks out watching us can hear and so we can brag on our police officers a little bit. On September 24th, the Police Civil Service Commission held promotional exams for captain, lieutenant, first sergeant, and sergeant. And after a review by state code, they are entitled to review their exam and a couple other things. We have, we will have some medical exams, which are already also required, but those officers who will be promoted are Josh Neighbors to captain, Ken Murphy to lieutenant, Brad Palmer to first sergeant, and Dakota Moore to sergeant. So congratulations to those police officers on their most recent promotion. And then lastly, the Fire Civil Service Commission met on October 23rd as well, and they set some dates for their agility exam and their written exam. And then also, they will have three open houses like they have in the past. They will, I don't have exact dates yet, but we will have an open house in November, one in December and one in January. And the agility exam is set for Saturday, January 31st, and the written exam is Thursday, February 26th. So that information should be on the website as well this week. So thanks to our commissioners on our police and fire for all their hard work and making sure that civil servants continue to grow and evolve. So, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The nonconforming use ordinance specifically establishing a procedure to revive abandoned nonconforming uses is on its way to the Planning Commission after council's action at committee of the whole. I've prepared a transmittal memo summarizing that and the required actions for the Planning Commission, and will be delivering that shortly. I understand it will be on their December agenda, so it should be back to council in the near future. With council's adoption of updates to the proclamation guidelines this evening, we'll follow up with the clerk's office and check on any updates needed to that application form, to the new distribution process to council members, and any other process updates we might need to get and get that moving forward as well. That's all I have to report this evening.
Sorry, I'm making notes. A report from council members. Councilor Michael, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I wanted to thank Public Works for going out and doing the corner of North Street and University Avenue. We had a visual problem, you know, with some bushes, and they went back and trimmed back for me. So I do appreciate that. That's all I have for tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Bugonam?
Sure. I also wanted to thank Public Works for delivering the cones and, I believe, Officer Balderson, who's in charge of shutting down the roads. I wanted to express my gratitude to him and the city and everyone involved for letting us shut down Madigan Avenue on Halloween. Everyone always appreciates the safety that they have, considering that with wheelchairs and accessibility and parents with strollers, it makes it a lot easier to take your kids trick-or-treating up and down the street. We had our parade and had music for the kids to start off, and were able to provide, I think we gave out 200 glow sticks to the kids so that they could be seen. All in all, the neighborhood is really happy and appreciative, and I'm going to stop there because it's getting late.
Councilor Hollingsen?
I just wanted to take a moment to commend all of the individual and organizational efforts that I've seen over the past couple days to get food... And I just want to encourage anyone who needs help organizing a food drive or getting the help into the hands of the people who need it to reach out to me, and I'm happy to connect you to the right people.
Thank you. Councilor Sill?
So I happen to live in the area behind Creps Park and Suncrest, and we had a lovely Halloween in our neighborhood, plenty of trick-or-treaters, people being kind to one another, and just enjoying being out in the neighborhood. I really just appreciate that about Morgantown and the fact that we can have these areas where we have cool parades, and hilly neighborhoods and not hilly neighborhoods that all manage to have little trick-or-treaters safely, safely go around. And people mostly drive or don't drive during that time, and I appreciate that. Few people seem to not quite get the message, and that's just how it is. But over time, hopefully, they'll, they'll catch on that you're supposed to either drive slowly or not at all for that brief period of time. And then I attended the Main Street downtown trick-or-treating at all the businesses, and it was really, really well done. Happened to see our mayor down there giving out some goodies, and as I said, I went with my son and my grandson, and we had fun at the trick-or-treat event, and then we also happened to get something to eat out at one of the businesses, which is really nice, and just a good, I hadn't, I hadn't been to this particular event in a couple of years, and it was, it was really well done, and I enjoyed this. There was a smoke machine and a super large figure outside one of the real estate businesses, and that was pretty fun. So anyway, that's enough for me. Thank you.
Councilor Downs?
Thanks. I'll try to be brief considering the time, but I want to thank, thank you all for, and staff for all the work that went in, and my co-sponsor, Jody Hollingshead, all the work that went into the Morgantown Mosaic project, feedback from the community, feedback from staff. I think we, you know, by working together and the partnership that was talked about during the tip discussion, we end up with a better product, and, and I think that was represented here. Thank you all. That was fun getting our first, first piece of legislation passed. So in the spirit of GIS Day, I want to mention a community member that undertook a first, a project of personal passion and had some positive outcome that we've seen so far. Western Express has been, is a logistics company that's been routing their trucks, semi-trucks, semi-trucks through, tractor trailers through our downtown for some time, several years. And, and Scott Frederick is the person that lives in First Ward and works with me, and he's been pursuing Western Express to, for, for a couple years to make inroads with their organizationally with them. And he got a call back last week from Western Express, and it was a, you know, a, a director level person that had no idea, you know, according to this person, had, had no idea that their, their trucks were being deviated through our downtown. And if you don't know about logistics drivers, the drivers will be penalized if they deviate, if their GeoTrak to deviate from their path, so, you know, they're not, they're not, they're just not going to do it. They're going to take the risk, they had no idea, but the person had no idea about the risks and the damage that they were doing, so.
Even going up Lily Street, that's a good thing.
No doubt, no doubt. They're just, they're just getting off 79, coming through Westover, through our downtown, up, up, up Lily Street and out to 68. So I hope that that becomes a practice that we can codify into kind of our organizational playbook and, and institute to, to make those kinds of impacts. That person may leave, and it may change, and they come back, and it happens again, and we have to make a phone call, and we have to, we have to undertake that again, but, but it, I think it's worthwhile, and it can work.
Could we, could we have a list of the talking points that he used, sort of somewhere, so that we could keep using it in other places?
I can, we can ask.
Yeah. Ask him if he's got some talking points.
I haven't due a training.
Right, right, right. We can, we can, we can ask.
I mean, he has his own special flair, I'm sure we can't possibly.
No doubt, but I don't think it was terribly sophisticated either, so. Not to, Scott is, Scott is a very, very smart, very smart, he's a savant, he's, you know.
Yes.
But, but anyway. There was lots of discussion about community benefits, that the community benefits are something that City Manager Miller and I met today. It's something that I have done, been doing some research, I did some traveling over the last couple weeks, and engaged in several podcasts about case studies on sustainable revitalization, economic development, and, and in one in particular, they examined nine cities that had, had various outcomes related to sustainable revitalization and without displacement, and, you know, so. But one of the, the key things that, that was discussed in the, in the cases that had the best outcome for the community was that they, they engaged themselves in, in putting those community development, community benefit agreements together. So where expectations were set for, for developers, and, you know, there was a give and a take, and those things were documented rather than just, just, you know, conversations that we have in meetings that, you know, that we're going to come and go, and those conversations are going to be forgotten. These are things that will be sustainable and will, will exist with, with those investments that we make on behalf of our community and our stakeholders. So that's something that I, I want to mention in the context of, of the conversation we had tonight. I don't, I don't think it's too late to, to, to look at that for, for, for East End, so. And finally, I decided to personally engage myself in the, the discussion and deliberation about the, the case. We've done, doing a lot of, a lot of conversation, having a lot of conversation about affordable housing. I decided to personally engage myself in the deliberation at the Public Service Commission about Hope Gas's proposed 41% rate increase. I've drafted a letter, I circulated it to all of you, I plan to sign and send it, I invite you all to sign and send it with me, and stand up for our community. I think there are more responsible ways to do this. I absolutely believe in the merits of investment in infrastructure and, and, and understand the rationale of behind having safe and reliable systems, but, but I, I think we can look at, we should be looking at, you know, ways to phase these in, you know, pair them with, with safety nets for people, you know, that, that, that live paycheck to paycheck, and, a lot of transparency, right, and so, about where the money's going. So you all have that in your inbox, and I'd like you to review it, and I'm happy to, I'll reach out independently and, and, or feel free to reach out to me, we'll coordinate logistics from there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Halloween was great. I, sitting on council, I don't think I've ever gotten a message from anybody about, like, this Halloween went great, and there was, like, a lot of engagement from different city staff to make sure that we were all safe and stuff like that, and I got three separate messages from people in my ward about that, which, so that means it made, like, a noticeable difference to them. So thanks for making us look good, staff, appreciate that. And I wanted to mention that so, you know, you guys heard it. But yeah, I mean, Halloween in our ward always goes well, it's safe and, and fun, and so it, it went well again this year. A lot of families putting out food for folks, which I appreciated seeing, but also, right now is probably the worst possible time that we could have picked to pause SNAP benefits. Food pantries are already kind of stretched thin because we're going into the holiday season. Families are stretched thin because we're going into the holiday season, and we're about to see a cliff in terms of funding for healthcare, and people's premiums are about to go from $300 to $4,000. Not an exaggeration. So, yeah, there's going to be people that will starve. So it, I think it's been really good to see the community step up and try to make sure that these pantries and other places have what they need at this time. I think the time was five years ago when we should have been planning for more sustainable food systems to try to make sure we could weather issues like this independent of our governments, but we can start working on that now. The other thing I would say is, if you're looking for places to volunteer, donate, whatever you need to do, volunteer hours are very valuable to these places, but, you know, Pantry Plus More, Scott's Run Settlement House, or St. Ursula's are all places that need your help right now, and so they would appreciate Christian help as well. And then next, right now, basically all the churches in town are doing food drives, but First Presbyterian and a group, and like Church of the Brethren and a group of a few other churches are doing specific food drives, and next, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, we'll have our monthly mutual aid fair, and we'll have a food distribution at that time, so it will be in the downtown area. There will also be a hot meal provided, just like there is every time. And in addition to that, if people want a hot meal every Saturday on High Street, there is a hot meal provided by Food Not Bombs, which is the same place that'll be doing the food next Thursday. But we anticipate to have a pretty large food distribution on the 13th if you need resources, or if you'd like to donate to that to make sure it gets to the people. But, yeah, that will conclude my comments, thank you.
I won't belabor any points of things that have already been discussed. Yeah, donate, volunteer, we're all doing what we can. Halloween was fun. My part of Woodburn has no sidewalks, so I just put a fancy bucket of candy out on my porch. I had one child stop by, I spent my time in Greenmont. We, I did, as mentioned, I set up and handed out candy during the, and food during the Main Street trick-or-treat, and then I participated in the Spooktacular on Halloween at the amphitheater before heading over to the Greenmont Hunt, which was my first time at that event. It was very fun. My son prefers to trick-or-treat at my parents' house with his cousins, but he decided he was old enough to go by himself this year, so I went to Greenmont. It was fun. As the city manager mentioned, this Friday evening is the Arts Walk. It is also First Friday for the arts, so there are a lot of indoor activities as well as the outdoor activities, depending on the weather. Wednesday, November 12th, will be a Woodburn Association of Neighbors meeting. I'll be there very briefly before I go and do some work at the WBU Student Government Association, but I will try to get everything covered for that meeting. And as mentioned, Councilor Celine and Councilor Hollingshead and I will be attending the National League of Cities City Summit Conference in Salt Lake City in two weeks, so apologies for the rescheduling of the council meeting. That's fine.
We could, we could also mention, if you don't mind, that when we have a committee, when we, when we have our second meeting of the month, at the normal time that we have the committee of the hall, that doesn't mean that we can't have more items that will come into the next month, because we don't have a committee of the hall at the end of December. So if people have committee of the hall items, don't hold back. We can have them at the end of that agenda so that then we're ready for more items that could happen in the month of December.
Certainly.
Just tip for people that are feeling like they want to get things done.
Just because it doesn't show up on a committee of the hall, doesn't mean it won't go on an agenda. Is there anyone willing to read us into executive session?
I move that to discuss legislative items and to seek legal guidance anticipated. As permitted by West Virginia Code 69A4B12, to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege as well as legal advice regarding operations and procedures of city boards and commissions, West Virginia Code 69A4B12.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We will take a few moments here and then go into executive session.
And then go take a nap.